Yeah, they should be coming to the mail.
I'm just checking to see if somebody was paying attention. It's so hard when you change and stuff changes.
Yeah, she can do it.
Well, you know that camera. That's fifteen pounds and a whole bunch of gray, buddy. You're on TV or something like that.
Oh, yeah, I know. You know.
It's like they filmed from the back.
Which one did you watch? I just watched that one too.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I didn't do too bad.
No, no, it's alright.
Initially, when they were saying it was a bad tip and I'm not a bad tip. And I said that, and then they didn't want to play where I said that. Bad tip, it just didn't happen. Doesn't make it a bad tip.
There's no such thing as a guarantee, this will happen.
It's like, well, doesn't matter what you're involving tonight. My interview is, my reaction to the tip. What led to that? Yeah, I just thought it was something that.
Yeah, we only have one actionable item today. And that's the tobacco? Oh, no, fee schedule and parks and rec department with who? Oh, we have separate parks and recreation as opposed to. I think we should definitely be more like the city of them.
We are kind of like you said, come. I've worked here long enough to know. Show us, this show is pretty accurate.
Yes, yes, remarkably so.
Evening, color.
How are you? It's been a Monday.
You already have those.
And a Tuesday.
And this morning I turned on the computers and none of the, why? None of the internet was on.
Really?
Yeah, seven forty-five about eight fifteen.
All my email on my phone just couldn't work and I can't figure out why.
Doesn't look like an exception.
For a second, I thought that was Andy and then I realized.
I don't, I don't have much experience with bird calls. We heard a peacock when the kids were, went to Binder Park Zoo over Halloween for Zuboo. And we heard this screaming and like, what? Oh, it's just a peacock.
It sounds like a person pretending to.
Yeah, yeah. No carbs today.
Some at the beginning of the parade, I guess I didn't see them running, so.
I had ice cream from the Sterling Books and Brew.
Before the parade?
During the parade.
Oh, is this slow down, there's a slowdown? You know, the earth dripping ice cream outside.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's almost totally gone. That bush got really good. It's totally gone now, I should have taken. No, that's what everyone, everyone was like, is your wife abusing you? I'm like, no, it was a thorn bush. I'll send you what it looks like now. Get that whole thing gone and put two non-threatening plants in its.
Non-threatening plants.
I took up this thorn bush and the thorn bush brought back.
Oh, yeah. When we first bought our house back in ninety-seven, we had the same problem.
I don't even know what it was, it had no flowers on it, it was just.
Yep, 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 they had little red berries in the fall, no flowers.
No berries, just thorns, yeah. Just leaves and thorns.
Well, I will go ahead and call our study session to order at six thirty-one P M. We have forum. We can start off with a bunch of pages.
And to the public, which stands on the nation, under God, and that goes below, but later to us as well.
Any quick, can we go to take roll call for us, please?
House member William. Reed here, Jackson here, Waller here, Davis. Brian.
Here.
And Mayor Snyder.
Here.
So, study session is just to discuss items that we need to take a vote on this evening. So, the first item that we will be voting on is our second reading of the ordinance for the tobacco product base product and alternative nicotine. We addressed this at our last meeting. Do we have any questions for our attorney? On this, before we get to our regular council meeting?
Nope. So, the changes, no more than you corrected the tobacco, the worst tobacco, and was that it?
No, the only, the only changes we made was the state statute changed the age, the minimum age to purchase or sell tobacco products from eighteen to twenty-one. Everything else is, is the same, so we, we've just updated the, the age minimum per the change in state law.
Alright, thank you, so, back again, you know, there was some wording. I didn't look to verify that the word tobacco and all that stuff was spelled correctly.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, those changes were made. I'm sorry, I, I missed what you said. I got with the clerk and, and that typo that was in there.
Because I didn't look for them off, because I, you know, I asked you many questions about that because I didn't understand the dollar amount, that made no sense to me.
Yeah, and it doesn't make sense to me either, but that's what the state put as the penalty, so we, we can't do more than that locally, so that's why we mirrored it.
Any other questions for calling on this, before we get to council? Right, we're also going to approve the updated team's schedule. You all should have seen that update in your packets. We're just adding a fifty-dollar refundable deposit. If an individual is going to be renting the pavilion at any of the parks. Any questions on that?
So, if you do want a refund?
No, we are adding. So, it's a refundable.
Oh, refund, yeah. Refundable with stipulations.
Okay. And then the rest are just going to be discussion items, so. Not sure if anybody wants to bring any topic up right now. Since we have time.
Yes. Recreation department.
It's just a discussion item? Mirror, both of them. So, there's nothing. There's no documents to review. Okay, gotcha, yeah. So, we don't have, yes, sorry, comment?
So, there was also the addition of the. Right, contract, this trade, it's on the main agenda, I don't think it moved on.
No. It's.
Yeah, I'd like to know that. Oh, yes, because we didn't.
Sure.
Yes, right.
Um, so. Yeah, so the, the nickel tour on this one is, so everyone's aware that the city has these very, some, in some cases, some very old C B D G. Loans that were done, this particular one was done back in nineteen seventy-nine. The way that this came up was apparently the former owner of this property, they, they've got it as a land contract assignment, but the way that they set it up, it's effectively, it was set up like a mortgage, but for the same purpose of getting those C B D G funds. But what happened is the property was transferred like three or four times between nineteen seventy-nine and now, but it was never transferred with any kind of requirement that would have required a title search. And so, because no one ever did a title search, they never realized that the city had a, had a secured interest in this property. Well, now, the reason this came to the forefront is somebody finally sold the property in a manner that required a title search and the title company discovered that we still had this outstanding mortgage. And I communicated with the title company and said, yeah, well, yeah, the only way that we can release their interest is if mortgage is paid. So, I did confirm with the finance department today that we did receive payment in full this morning. So, this would just be a discharge of the city's interest in the property because we have now, forty years later, been paid in full.
Wow. So, do we have to take any action on this?
Yeah, it'd be just a vote to, it should be on the main agenda for approval, just for me, approving me to sign a, a release and discharge of the land contract assignment, because it's been paid in full.
Do we have questions for attorney on this?
Not on that.
Forty, you, you just planted me, right?
It was, it was from nineteen seventy-nine, yeah.
Wow.
The C B D G program was not managed, managed in a, in a.
In a what?
I mean, it just. I don't know what the record keeping was like back in the seventies, but it, it seemed to just taper off and become nonexistent as time went forward. And so, every once in a while, we get one of these because somebody does a warranty deed on one of these properties and, and has to do a title search and then they say, oh, hey, city valving has, you know, this, I think, is the oldest one we've ever come across, the last one, I think we saw was from the nineties, which is a little bit better, but but in any event, the city's been paid in full, so.
And didn't you say that because it definitely put claim deed on this, it doesn't go to a title office?
Right.
So, there's no search on the records of it, so something where it's paid.
Yeah, whenever people transfer property by quick claim deed, they, they don't require title searches or title insurance, they just record it and the property changes hands. And unfortunately for the seller in this case, because when they purchased the property, they didn't, apparently didn't have that done. It has now cost them fifty-three hundred dollars, so.
Now, see who did it, you know, they are up to date.
Okay. Great. Any other questions for this topic? So, we do have opportunities for public comment at this time?
Actually, man, can we go back to the discussion on combining parks and recreation?
We didn't go. We didn't have discussion.
So, y'all don't want to discuss it now?
I know.
We got time, we don't have nothing else to talk.
We'll discuss it again when we have.
A little bit shorter than the meeting.
It doesn't, I mean, I mean, it was a, it's really a, just a discussion. Why? Because I know the dollars and cents that we don't have for the parks to do the upkeep in the different areas and then also just a little search, I want to do more information, I mean, searching on this, but I know combining those two, you know, we continue to go back and forth trying to get millages for recreation, but when you do combine those two, what I did see that you were able to get more money. Especially if you couldn't get a, if you can't get a millage, you can get grants because you put in there that you have tennis, which is recreation, you have soccer, because we do have soccer up there, but you're able to start combining some of the activities that are throughout the city that are out on the grounds. You'd be able to combine those in to be able to get grants. And, you know, and then also, you know, that was just, you know, a thought, but I would like for our lawyer to tell us more about if we did something like that, because I know there's something in some kind of act that might say, maybe we can or cannot do that. But I think we can, and then also when I was speaking to you, what were your thoughts?
I don't disagree, it's just.
And then also, I see also that when you're hiring, you can combine some of that as someone of duty, you can keep them on longer and we can have people around who take care of these parks. But without that money, we can't do any of that. So, I would like to know the pros and the cons and see if it's something that we want to look off into because we need those grounds to continue to look good. Now, you just added the splash pad and, you know, people was like, okay, you know, people take their kids and they've been dropping them off there and they come back and they're getting, you know, I knew that would happen anyway. Alright, and then we don't have any money, you know, for anybody to be out there watching them and things get smeared, things get broken, and that's in all, all of our parks. And even if we wanted to add something, you know, special as bowling, the new, you know, whatever, you still get funds for that. There's additional funds for all these things that we're asking because we really don't have recreation that is consistent. So, it'd be nice to add all of those things, you know, baseball, T-ball, whatever, and you can get more dollars to keep those programs to continue to go.
I'm confused. We've had a recreation millage in the past. So, how does adding parks change the access to resources through millages? We could just as easily pass a millage in support of our parks. There's, one does not preclude the other, does it?
That's why I just said I like to know the pros, I like to know the cons. I know sometimes as you continue to ask for millages, they kind of don't want to, you know, keep going with millages, they don't want to keep. Yeah.
You're talking about the general public sort of losing momentum.
Right, because we're not holding, you know, and we want to say we're holding up standards, if we look at it, we're not, we don't always say that we got the recreation. Recreation should be in a building and it should be consistent, not every other day.
Right.
Due to somebody sick, somebody ill, don't want to come because we're hiring outside people to keep recreation to continue to go. I'm not talking about Y M C A, Y F C F, to hire individuals here to keep it going and it's not consistent of that, but if we could do something even better to combine that together to make it more consistent for, to meet all the needs here in Albi, and I think it's good to look into. And I say, yeah, yeah, let's do it, but let's look into something where we can be more consistent for our, for our city.
So, the, the goal when looking into it, do we look at other communities, thank you, Madam Mayor? Do we look at other communities and see what they're doing?
I did kind of glance at one already, but I, I think we could do a couple of things.
That's what, that's what you're.
Because they have, you know, there's a few that I think have come together and it just made it bigger.
Okay.
And then you also, they use their trails, you know, their foot trails, or you could add nature trails, all those things are considered at recreation, and I don't think we understand what recreation is. Fishing, you know, that's one of the things about, you know, trying to take care of Barnes Park, fishing, just putting the boat out there, you know, all those different things, they are recreation and we're not doing enough of that, because we have plenty of this area in Albi, just a beautiful place, so. When people want to come here, they get to get a piece of everything that we have, basically. So, I just thought it would be nice to see the pros and the cons of what we could do different to make it even better.
Yeah, makes sense. I, I don't see an issue with looking into it, and it, it may be something in there that's more beneficial to, um, the parks and recreation system than what we currently have in place. I know our parks budget is something that gets utilized to the max, you know, every year. And with the, with the rec and the way that we're currently doing it, I think having some additional funding may help us out a lot as a city, I know we have more things that we need to do in recreation programming and things like that, so. I think it could be a good thing as well.
Paula, do you have a question? Over, how to combine parks and what?
I mean, under the ordinance, there comes, I mean, there are already, it's the, the chapter headings, parks and recreation. So, under, under ordinance, realize that kind of already are combined, I mean, I think they're completely bifurcated in terms of budgeting, which is an administrative thing that, you know, could be changed, but a couple of years ago, they did establish the recreation advisory commission, which you know, realistically, while it's entitled recreation, I mean, I think a lot of it was to talk about recreation and parks and, and the programs in the city, so, but, I mean, as of right now, if you look at chapter sixty-two of our ordinances, it's entitled Parks and Rec. So, I think the idea was that they, the two concepts are almost synonymous with each other because a lot of recreation does occur in the parks, so.
So, I, I mean, and I haven't been to a recreation meeting in a long time. You guys, is that a regular type of conversation of arch up need or arch usage?
Because it might be in there, but it sound like that in the phones. So, even when we talk to, you know, financial, there's like, you know, that's, that's not a bad idea. Combine some of that, because you don't, you might be on some ordinance or some piece of paper, but it's not being taken care of.
Been really working on trying to get some rules and regulations out for, for. Rules and regulation that, as to what can and cannot be done in the parks and how, and, and upkeep in here, but I agree, you know, if we could have, because people are, are coming out more now and, and they're getting into the parks, into the air and everything, and, and I agree with Nora, we just really need to do a little bit more in the parks, and I think one of them is we need to have some supervision in there too, so.
Yes, Councilwoman. Okay, thank you, so, by ordinance, we are already parks and recreation, right?
Yeah, I mean, the chapter title is Parks and Recreation.
So, it's basically administrative. They collaborate the two on their end.
Well, I mean, my understanding is you've got a separate recreation and a separate parks budget, probably, so I mean, whether or not those funds got combined is probably a question for the finance director and whether or not that would raise any. Well, like I said, that's probably, that's probably a question for our finance director, I mean, I, I don't see an issue with it as long as, is, as long as you're using it basically for one blended purpose, but I'm not the accountant.
Right, so, I mean, that just goes back to the pros and the cons of taking and putting the tickets.
Right, I mean, I think hypothetically it could be done. Whether there's a, a financial advantage to doing that, I don't know.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was looking at her expenditures to see.
This evening, we're going to hear from Rod Barton, who is going to talk about the work group and give us some statistics that are alarming in terms of the health in Albi, and health factors in Albi. So, if we combine it, we may want, once we hear his presentation, we may want to put health in there someplace because we're at the top of the scale when it comes to obesity and high blood pressure and diabetes and things like that. So, as we're looking at combining the resources, and there may be additional resources because of the health factors, so you may want to, you know, when we hear him, that may be added to parks and recreation because we have to do more than play at this stage of the game in terms of our health in Albi. The fact that we live ten years shorter than people in surrounding areas, so we may want to add health factors when we're talking about parks and recreation in Albi. So, we'll listen and just think about the options or the opportunities that we may want to seek because of this information.
I, I just have a question, completely unrelated to anything that's been brought up, but I notice as I drive to Coldwater every morning that where once there was a tremendous number of lily pads, they're now seeing to be brown. So, my question is, has somebody officially, unofficially dumped herbicide in the river?
Since our last.
Since our last meeting, so the lily pads people were complaining about seem to be gone and they're replaced with brown mats of dead vegetation, so. I, yeah.
Is it possible the temperature change could affect those?
I, I don't think they would die that quickly.
I got you.
Unless they were. So, I wasn't sure, given our conversations, meetings about whether or not the D N R has taken actions, you know, using their resources and informed us, or.
I doubt that they would.
I doubt they would, yeah, no.
Oh, yeah, if you just want to go check it out, it's just, it's amazing, literally, there's literally no green vegetation on the river to the west, to the west of Superior Street.
Supposed to have been our decision. Oh, yeah, he said to the, oh, he said to, he said to the west, yeah, I mean, I, I was out there the other day, I drive out there often, so. It's green out there and then you see some brown, but not that much.
Go look today.
Yeah, might have changed today though, but yeah, so.
Yeah.
Back to that, the discussion. When you spoke of the health, I, I, you know, I totally agree about health, but then also when I was looking at it too, adding exercise equipment and stuff out there, it's part of the reaction to, you know, there's some out there at Highland Park, that stuff can be added around there, because that really is the other thing that comes to us in the higher scale of the diabetes and all that kind of stuff. We know already people don't eat right, but they don't even walk. You know, and some things that we can, you know, add to health in our parks, it's, it's so much, but I agree with that as well, so, but yes.
So, like I said, I think hypothetically, you know, if, if there is a financial advantage, I mean, the funds could be combined, but one thing I was thinking about is any millages that we have going right now for, whether it's recreation or parks, unless you, unless you start a completely new millage in specific language, those millages can only be used for their designated purpose. So, that's the, that's one thing that we'd have to be very, very mindful of in, in the talk of, of combining of the, the two.
And we just think of the recreation millages this year, but last year.
So, we have separate parks and rec millages, separate.
I don't think we have a parks millage.
I think I've just seen it on.
Well, well, yeah, we just have a parks gift.
Yes, good, yeah, so.
If that's the case, then there's still room for growth, because if the knowledge says a distinction of one area, then we can use that area for, you know, for parks and the other area that comes in maybe from grants and donations for, for something else. So, it's a win-win situation.
Yeah, that was the county park, you know.
Alright, so, let's, the time for any public comments, anybody in the gallery would like to stand?
Public comments, anybody in the gallery would like to stand? You have three minutes to make a public comment if you'd like to do so. If anybody. Any further discussion needed? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, support.
I'll be able to say aye.
Aye.
Making a journey six fifty-five PM, you have five minutes. To get water, take a break, and then be back.